It's six o'clock, I'll take roll call now.
Just a second. Sorry. I looked up Kim one more now.
Mr. Fuller Love is absent at this moment. Mr. Dominic?
I'm here.
Mrs. Lyon? Absent at this time. Mr. Kaber?
Here.
Mrs. DeBlock?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Here.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Here.
Okay. Item 2.01, the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, 3.01, adoption of agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved. Second. Second.
A motion was made by Mr. Dominic, seconded by Mr. Helm, to adopt the agenda as presented. Mr. Dominic?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yep.
Mr. Kaber?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBlock?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Uh, 4.01, we do not have any members in the audience to recognize. Excuse me, so on to 4.02, good news report.
That is me.
Yay!
We have quite a bit, actually. This might be exciting, maybe isn't even to have. But across the whole district, last week, we had a wonderful time celebrating our gratitude and appreciation for our fabulous teachers and staff. Every school throughout our district put together snacks, activities, and other unique novelties to demonstrate how much we love our staff, and we wanted to make sure they knew it. Thank you very much to all of our parents and others behind the scenes who provided any and everything, from time to money, to make it such a wonderful experience. A huge thank you again to our teachers and staff as we wrap up another great year and begin looking forward to many more in the future. Spring math testing is underway, and we are already seeing harder results as students complete their assessment. It is invigorating for students and, of course, the teachers to have an opportunity to see how much they have grown over the past school year. From the junior high and high school world, we have High School Students of the Month, Timothy Blue, Octavia Rodriguez, Eliza Dominique, Kayla Anne Cessup, Zoe Rains, Josh Worlowsky, Lady Bob, Anna Churchill, and Lexi Glancy. Thirteen junior high track members have qualified for state. There are Chloe Coons, Justine Ellsbury, Tara Rose, Madison Woodward, Piper Russell, Kylie Mathis, Sophia Bradrich, Charlotte Meskin, Landon Clark, Quinn Zimmerman, Dominic Ferencroft, Landon Van Winkle, and Gavin Sorantes. Baseball has ended their season as the Three Rivers Athletic Conference West champs. With a 10-1 record, they secured the number-one postseason seed with a 21-4 record overall. The high school softball team finished tied for second in the conference with an 8-3 record. They secured a number-two postseason seed with a 21-9 record. The high school girls' track team won sectionals, and 11 of the high school track girls have qualified for state. And the boys' track participates in sectionals tomorrow in Galesburg. At the elementary level, first through fourth grade students at the two elementary buildings, the lower elementary buildings, participated in a Bikes for Books Kia-Pain sponsored by the two local Masonic lodges. Matthew Harland from Winola Elementary and Gus Cleveland from Sherard Grade were the drawing winners. Matthew has already been presented with his bicycle from the Alito Lodge, and Gus will receive his at an award ceremony on the last day of school. Congratulations to all of our readers. Career Day took place at both Winola Elementary and Sherard Elementary, and not you, Ken. At the end of the film, with many local parents and professionals attending to share their career experiences and allow students an opportunity to hear about some of the different possibilities for their future. Thank you very much to Ms. Barogan and our local professionals for such a rewarding and valuable experience for our students. Recent Tiger Talent recipient Kathy Slattery continued her media tour over the past couple weeks, being featured not only on the district website, but also in the R-I-R-O-E newsletter and multiple news stories on WQ80. We hope this celebration never stops as Ms. Slattery continues to shine and bring positivity to those around her. The ROE also recognized Winola Elementary Employee of the Month, Lori Staves, last month. She teaches special education at our school, and she's recognized by her colleagues as being our building's kid whisperer. She fosters strong relationships with her students and her parents alike. Kindergarten Roundup took place at both buildings. We had a very successful turnout at both buildings. A large number of families attended to meet staff, see the buildings, and receive information regarding the upcoming school year. Sherard Grade held their spring fine arts night. They had a very large turnout of students and families to participate in sci-fi-related activities, hear some live music, and even meet a local author. He wanted to give a shout-out to Mr. Vermeer and the staff for putting together such a wonderful event, and the families for coming out for making it such a special experience. Matherville tried something new with their family night, and that was last night, actually. You can see some footage of that a few minutes ago. They invited community organizations to come out and share time with their families. They had some junior-senior high activities, the academic foundation, the regional office of education, Mercer and Rock Island County Sheriff's Department members, Matherville Fire Department, New Windsor Rodeo and Drill Team, and more. There were a total of 28 community groups that participated. And it was nice that the shelter held on my floor. It was pretty tryable. And Matherville Field Day will be held on Tuesday, May 28. Mr. Volker and the Matherville staff always put on a great charity for the students. Sherard Grade students, when is your charity, actually? Yeah, I didn't have that for sure. But our Tiger Olympics is held this Friday. We're excited to be including all of the parents and the fire department again this year. It's always a good muddy mess, and the kids have a blast. And then, on behalf of the administrative team, we would like to thank Mr. Bazala for all of his years of service. You've left the district in a better place than when it was when you first arrived. We're all proud to call you a friend and wish you the very best of luck. And you can now... Whenever you want to.
Thinking he might be a little scared come June. But...
I had to get that out there now because I...
Yeah, it's been, you know, a good competition, right? Yeah. You really brought out the participation spirit in everyone, Mr. Bazala.
That is very true.
How many months has it been that it's been running?
Well, I had the first one.
Well, I think one, two... Yeah. You know, a movement starts with one person. I'm just saying.
Who's Tiger Talent was he in? Or when he did that?
He would have done it September when he did it. So I started making fun of him. I've been rolling ever since. Yes.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Roberts.
Sorry, that was a lot. That's why May is so great, though. There's so much to watch.
That's right.
Agenda item 5.0, approval of consent agenda items. Are there any questions or concern with the consent agenda as presented?
I have one thing to throw on there.
Sure.
This is, it's an informational thing, but this is probably the best place to put it. If you'll notice, that our breakfast and lunch recommended prices, 5.10. We are, as a district, participating to try to get the news out. There's a summer, it used to be referred to as like a summer lunch program. Well, now what it is, is all families that have direct certification for free and reduced lunch. All of those kids are going to be eligible for extra money through an EBT card that will be issued to the parents, X number of dollars per month. Because the, you know, the state legislature, the state, the governor's administration, they were extremely worried about kids that rely on schools for at least two of the meals a day. And the feedback over the years has been, you know, that's a very real issue in the summertime. So ISB has provided us with some communication tools in terms of form letters. Here's what you can send home. So we made sure that we sent those letters home. We're just kind of the conduit for information. It doesn't cost us anything, but we're just notifying those parents that you do qualify for these particular funds so that you can have more money for your kids in the summertime, essentially, is what it is.
But the parents have to fill that in instead of by again, or is this going to automatically go off?
Yeah. I think it's honestly, it's automated because we get their names from, we get their names through the lunch program from the state. So whoever already qualifies for it is who, for free lunch or reduced lunch, is who's going to qualify for that. So it's basically just more or less a reminder, hey, don't forget, you can have this.
But it will automatically just go on the parent's card?
Right.
Okay.
They'll have to take a step.
Sounds good.
So, yeah. Good for the families in need.
I hope it's used correctly. All right, with that, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented?
So moved.
Second.
A motion was made by Mr. Dominic, seconded by Mrs. Lyon, to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Mr. Dominic?
Yes.
Mrs. Lyon?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mr. Kaber?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yep.
Mrs. DeBlock?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, Mr. Johnson.
All right. Welcome, everyone, again. Tonight's superintendent report might set a new record in that all but one item has attachments. So I'll try to keep things moving in the right direction. The first item is the tentative amended budget. So we have to present an amendment to the budget, and then that has to remain on display for 30 days. And then we will present that for adoption at the June board meeting. So I have to give Lindsay a shout-out. She's found another way to simplify things. If you'll notice, your executive attachments, they are... Let me, I've got a paper copy to hold up. They're in our SDS format, so they look like this. Okay? Found a report that's pretty awesome, and it essentially is your third column that's titled Budget Adjustments. Those are really the only columns that you have to look at. So out of, so for all the revenue funds, or excuse me, accounts, and all of the expenditure accounts, if that item is zero, we didn't adjust it. We're just, you know, we're essentially leaving alone what was adopted in the fall. Okay? So a couple blanket statements, and then we'll look at some of the nuts and bolts. Number one, as far as the revenues go, the projections for revenue are pretty much solid with what we had projected in the fall. Now, we know realistically they're going to be a little bit higher based on what we're hearing from the counties. I think we nailed the tax levy in terms of what's actually going to come in versus what the estimate was. That's a good thing. Our interest income is going to be far above the projection. We kind of left that alone because we didn't really know where that's going to end up because we've got the CDs in there. And then, again, the money market fund, Farmer State Bank rides the market. So we're not 100% sure, but essentially, what you see on the bottom line for revenues, you can be assured that it's going to be a little bit higher. We could adjust that, but I'm kind of that sky is falling guy to always be on the air on the safe side. So that's why the revenue projections aren't going to be much different than what you saw in the fall. On the expenditure side, also, the sky is falling type of guy, just for safety purposes, we only made adjustments, for the most part, to major funds or major accounts that we had to worry about. And those are usually things that are unforeseen expenses. Okay? A good example to look at would be, let's see, that first page that you see right there where there's a $28,000 adjustment. Okay? This is kind of a closeout year for grants. I guess, is there a better way to say that, Lindsay, other than everything that we've talked about for the last four years, it's all ending this coming fiscal year? So there's a lot of things that are closing out right now. There's a lot of things, everything else has to close out by September, right? Okay? So there's some grant things in here that you'll see that are a little bit different. The teacher vacancy grant has been added in here. So for the most part, there's not a lot of changes. But as you look through, it's, again, that third column over that's titled Budget Adjustments. Those are the only accounts that we had to touch this year. So overall, I think we're in phenomenal shape. It's projected to be a deficit budget, just like it was in the fall. But I'm going to go ahead and go out on a limb and say that after the auditors are done with everything and we've counted all the pennies, it's probably still going to finish in the black. Okay? So that won't do anything to lower fund balances, but it's a good sign for the future. Okay? Again, I always turn it like the farmer's mentality. Out of 10 years, you're going to have seven good, three bad, maybe. So make sure that you're saving in those good years for whatever could come. Okay? Seventeen pages of expenditures there, but again, that's because every account is listed. All right? And again, the only ones that we had to touch were those ones that, and here's the highly scientific method that we use. Lindsay and I sit down periodically at the halfway point. If your expenditures are at about 50%, good. If something's way out of whack and it would read that you've expended 25%, okay, can we adjust that, you know, to make the budget a little bit more accurate? Or if it's 50 halfway through the year and you've expended 75%, you'll look at that a little closer for an explanation. So when we sat down with this a couple weeks ago, we're looking at the 80% range. If something is over 80% or under that substantially, we probably made an adjustment. Okay?
Far out our CDs.
Let me get to the right page. We have, that's, Lindsay, that's under...
It's under the deposit summary.
Summary of deposits.
There's one that comes due in July. The rest are September, October, November, I believe.
Is this like 10 months at a time or a year at a time?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, and that...
We're trying to lock in, we're going to go back down.
Right, right. Yeah.
We get, but once a week at least. About every 10 days, we'll get from the school district liquid asset fund where that we're using for these, they'll throw out the new rates. And we always know when it comes through because you hear Dr. Johnson yell, "You gotta be kidding me!" Because we talked last fall about, let's lock into some longer-term ones because the Fed's saying the interest rates are going to finally start to come down, and they haven't. So, I mean, you know, these that were... Sorry, I've got my head tilted sideways like a dog here. So we had that one year that we locked in at 4.99 and thought, wow, this is awesome. Well, I think we could lock in for 5.05 right now. Let's see, the one that matures in December, 5.42. I don't think we can get something quite that good, but it's not far off. So essentially, the projections by everybody for the Fed is not how the Fed behaved. So ultimately, good for us in the long run as far as those investments.
That never happens, right?
No, no. But I think it's conspiring as Dr. Johnson tries to build a house.
Of course.
And make it all about me. So... Any questions on the tentative budget? But again, there's a significant amount of detail in there. If there's any individual account that you're seeing that you want to talk about, let me know. Two things to think about. The transportation's going to be wonky because of the delivery time of the bus. So we actually, we only bought two buses this year, but we take delivery of three. So that $135,000, $140,000, excuse things, in a big hurry. Same thing with the capital fund. We weren't bringing in a substantial amount of money because that's what the bonds brought in, but we did lay out a pretty fair piece of money this year for predominantly the Sherard Elementary. Okay? All right, awesome. I think we got to have a motion on that one.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Oh, I apologize.
Oh, sorry. I was talking to Becky.
He told me to do it. Don't be, I didn't agree with her. He wanted to...
Go ahead, Becky.
Do I have a motion to approve the tentative amended fiscal year '24 budget as presented?
Absolutely.
Second.
A motion was made by Mr. Helm, seconded by Mr. Dominic, to approve the tentative amended fiscal year '24 budget as presented. Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Dominic?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBlock?
Yes.
Mr. Kaber?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mrs. Lyon?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, the next exciting item that we have here, again, talking about a healthy fund balance. As we look at our fleet, it is aging. And one of the things that we dealt with last year were the maintenance pickups. Now I think it's time to, excuse me, and also a minibus, the regular full-size buses. I think it's time that we put a little attention towards some other things. For example, the driver's ed car. Current driver's ed car is a 2016 Impala with 95,000 miles. And the philosophical struggle that I've been having in my own brain is, I'd love to be able to just replace that with something similar, but it seems like the automakers are getting away from sedans. And if you drive through a car lot now, almost everything is some type of an SUV.
GM is not, is going to stop making sedans. Period. They announced that.
I think Ford did last year. So, you know, it's, so basically, this is where we're at. So if we can train kids on a vehicle that's a little more similar to what would be expected that they're going to be driving, in addition to the fact that it's an older car with almost 100,000 miles on it for maintenance purposes. I think if you look at the bid specs, again, as I mentioned, attachments galore tonight. Size-wise, I think what we're looking at is Ford Escape and Chevy Blazer is what comes to mind. Equinox Terrain Blazer for a Chevy GMC. And then I think Jeep Compass is the other thing that's in that realm. So we basically have covered the three major manufacturers, and we'll invite them to give us a bid if the board approves this. And those, most of those run for a price for a school, probably in the $25,000 to $28,000 range is what I'm anticipating. We don't get that big, I tried going through the Ford Fleet number that saved us the huge amounts of money on everything, on the pickups that we bought. It doesn't work like that for SUVs. I think he ballparked that we might save 300 or 400 bucks. So, over your standard government discount.
Might be confusing my, or like municipal, the state bid type of situation. Does the school districts can't, like, teach you on that, can they?
They can, but usually, one dealership gets the bid, and they're always cleared out. So hopefully, that'll be something that's more in the coming years. But I think those state bid people are still kind of recovering from the COVID rarity, if you will. Because, for example, when we're looking at trucks, it was a dealership in south of Springfield, I think, that had got the bid.
They got any trucks?
A lot, yeah. There was nothing to pick from. So, but that's a good point. And this is, I think dealerships keep that in mind, knowing what the state bid is. So when they see something like this, they're not going to, you know...
As you're going through this, since we have three different manufacturers and stuff, when you do get into bids, are you going to like compare safety ratings and stuff from the different vehicles, whether it's four or five star? And get that consideration?
Definitely, definitely. And making sure that they're all similarly equipped, if you will. So, yeah. It doesn't, I'm open for input. I don't think we necessarily need like a four-wheel-drive vehicle. I think front-wheel drive is perfectly fine and cuts down on maintenance and everything else.
I think we should get manual transmissions.
100% agree.
Well, yes, it's probably cut down on the pass rate.
Hey, our Jeep, our Jeep is manual. The kids' engagement in driving is phenomenal.
Oh, yeah.
Well, it just, we've been at it a lot.
Mine has put their phone down.
Yeah, I mean, because the driving is such an involved experience, yes.
Absolutely.
But I think an actual Jeep, like a Wrangler, I think is one of the few things you can get anymore in a manual.
Well, it's Ford cars, which probably wouldn't be a good idea for that.
Dr. Johnson, I'd like to talk to you about this '24 Camaro bid for a driver's ed car convertible, I see.
It's a parade car, universal parade car. Yeah, right.
The kids are in the vaccine like this.
Defensive driving.
So... But if everybody's okay with that, I have some tentative dates listed on there of opening a bid of June 14th. So we have enough time to look them over, make some comparisons, and then recommend the selection. Now, having said that, if it comes in completely over the top and way too expensive, just say no and wait a year.
Are you going to four cylinders or six cylinders?
I would guess it's probably going to be a four.
Because I know, this is sad, but this is apparently my shopping list of cars because I've had all of them. But I know, like, when I had the Equinox, they, you know, deterred because of the weight of the car to go ahead and go with a six-cylinder.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know with kids training on the vehicle, if that would make a difference, but they just don't have the, get a...
They got turbo fours now. They're like...
Are they? Okay.
Yeah, they scoop right along for the turbo fours.
Because you're going to have four people in there the vast majority of the time.
Yeah, it's going to be way, so...
Yeah, the 2.0s, they were, they're pretty cool, Jim. Yeah, the, the two-point-os, they were, they were pretty cool, Jim.
Well, good. It'll be interesting to see what people have on the lot and submit. So, alright.
Do I have a, or a, a motion to approve the release of the packet for the new driver's ed vehicle? Unless Becky would like to.
A motion was made by Mrs. Lyon, seconded by Mr. Helm to release bid packets for the new driver's ed vehicle as presented. Mrs. Lyon?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBlack?
Yes.
Mr. Kaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mr. Dominic?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, our next item, the resolution of prevailing wage act. This is essentially, best way to put it is an affirmation that we are going to follow the law and hold our contractors to the law as it pertains to the prevailing wage act. A lot of whereas and heretofores, anybody's welcome to read it if they would like. But it's sent, we get a list of, and the law has changed actually in the last couple of years to where it's moved the impetus from the districts adopting and watchdogging this so heavily to the contractors. So we get the list of what the prevailing wage is. But honestly, in any big project, it's our architect who keeps an eye on things. So for example, with the Sherard project, we didn't have to do anything with that. The, the contractors had to submit all the pay requests through Hodge and then through the architects. And they double-checked everything, so it was kinda nice. One thing that it's actually very relevant right now when we talk about the Matherville approach, the one that's always underwater, that was one of the thing when I got some quotes that I talked to the people and said, we're a public entity, this is prevailing wage. Can you guarantee that? Obviously, they said yes, so that's kind of a timely piece of the whole puzzle. Alright, that's it with that one.
Alrighty, so is there a motion to approve the resolution of prevailing wage act for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five?
Second.
A motion was made by this, Mr. Dominic, seconded by Mr. Kaver to approve the resolution prevailing wage act for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Mr. Dominic?
Yes.
Mr. Kaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBlack?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yep.
Mrs. Lyon?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Alright, uh, next item is the resolution of board meeting dates. We've stuck with the traditional format. Um, the only adjustments would be if we had to make sure, some years you have to make sure that you get that thirty days for things like budget and levy, et cetera, so. It's on the eighteenth next year, so we're good to go there.
On this one, see?
For the year, we did it on Thursday.
Yeah, the twentieth next month. We switched to the twentieth.
The twentieth.
Yeah, next, next month is the twentieth. In, in twenty twenty-five, it'll fall on June eighteenth as a Wednesday, so we're good to go there.
But like October sixth, that's not over break or anything? It could be, it may be.
No.
No?
Nope.
Next week?
Yep. So we are, yeah, the, uh, break is the week before, correct.
Okay.
We're good to go.
So I'll take a motion to approve resolution of board meeting dates for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five calendar.
So moved.
Second.
A motion was made by Mrs. Lyon, seconded by Mr. Dominic to approve the resolution of board meeting dates for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Mrs. Lyon?
Yes.
Mr. Dominic?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yep.
Mr. Kaver?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBlack?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, our next resolution is for our depositories, our banks. Um, if you'll see the attachment there, it lists First Community Bank Sherard, uh, the Illinois School District Liquid Asset Fund through PMA Securities, Farmer State Bank, Western Illinois in Viola, and Blackhawk Bank and Trust. So all of those are, have been in the past. And, uh, the request is that those continue to be our preferred depositories approved by the board.
Do I have a motion to approve the resolution of depositories for twenty-four, twenty-five calendar year? This year, I was supposed to crack it back. I'll second, second.
A motion was made by Mr. Helm, seconded by Mrs. Lyon to approve resolution of depositories for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Mr. Helm?
Yes.
No, no, we stay.
Mrs. Lyon?
I'm gonna be on board meeting, or whatever.
Well, Becky's getting a little mouthy, so I'm. I was being a little bossy.
I don't know what this is like, I'm gonna, I'm gonna enjoy this.
The lighting is strange, I'll tell you that.
Okay, a motion was made by Mr. Helm, seconded by Mrs. Lyon.
Yeah.
Mr. Helm, I got you, uh, Mrs. Lyon?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBlack?
Yes.
Mr. Kaver?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mr. Dominic?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, let's talk paving. Six point zero six, the Matherwell, Matherville Intermediate Driveway Approach. Mr. Schellinger, please stay seated and don't cheer or anything like that. Uh, the, let's see, what's the best way to put it? The middle approach at Matherville is currently concrete. At one time, there was a culvert under there, I'm guessing it's completely smashed. Um, I talked with Jim Hampton, the road commissioner, and he basically gave me his idea for what would work. I gave him an idea for what I would like to see. Uh, we high-fived and basically told him that I was going to figure, I asked his opinion. I said, the bidding threshold is fifty thousand dollars by state laws. And he said, oh, I'd never approached something like that. I said, awesome. I said, Taylor Ridge Paving has done some work for us over at the school, at Sherard Grade School. Uh, they do a nice job. I asked him for recommendations, I also asked Hodge for recommendations, I also asked our own John Kaver for recommendations. Um, and I received quotes back from Valley Construction and Taylor Ridge Paving. So, um, the low estimate, if you will, um, is from Taylor Ridge Paving. They would be able to take out that concrete, put a new culvert in there, raise it up so it's not a tremendous dip, so it would all, it would be easier on the buses. They wouldn't cut the corners and it won't be underwater forever. So, um, the bid for that, to put a twelve-inch culvert under that and probably widen it out about five feet on each side, uh, comes, the low estimate is twelve thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. I also had Langman Construction, uh, got an email from them and they said, we'd love to, but fact of the matter is it's too small for us to mobilize, okay, so.
Did they actually bid on that last September?
For.
That's the date on their proposal.
Um, he. Yeah, I had him, uh, when I first talked to Jim Hampton last year, I had him come out and take a look at it and that they submitted, uh, so that he said they're gonna honor it. So I was pretty happy with that, considering how much everything seems to go up, so. Yep.
You think asphalt, that's, what's there now, it's concrete now, but it's sag, it's settled. Asphalt, bus, bus traffic's not gonna be too hard on asphalt, is it?
Not with that, that much basin, we're gonna compact it down, six-inch gravel basin, I think, so.
I can, I kinda chuckled a little bit.
Yeah, I was saying, it's not a big, heavy dump truck for tandem or semi or nothing, buses aren't that heavy, so.
I kinda chuckled laughing, I go, you really think six inches of gravel's gonna bring that where it needs to be? And he said, probably not, but standard.
That's probably, that, that actually is probably minor compared to the, a little more gravel, it's probably not the end of the world there.
Yeah, so, but, uh, so my recommendation to the board would be to accept the quote for twelve thousand two hundred and fifty with Taylor Ridge Paving. I also have experience with them. Um, they were the low bidder on the big parking lot job right before I left Kelowna and they seemed to do a pretty nice job with things, so very comfortable with them.
Do we have a motion to approve the repair? Would you stop? I'm telling you, everyone behaves.
I don't get to do these things.
To approve the repair on one Matherville Intermediate Parking Lot, I always say of one Matherville approach, that's why. Um, and accept the bid by Taylor Ridge Paving as presented.
I'll make a motion.
I think Casey should. Casey.
First time ever.
Everyone else is like, why are they so excited?
A motion was made by Mrs. Fullerlove, seconded by Mrs. Cleveland to approve the repair of the Matherville Intermediate Parking Lot slash driveway approach, um, as Taylor Ridge Paving accepting their bid. Mr. Fullerlove?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mr. Dominic?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yep.
Mrs. DeBlack?
Yes.
Mrs. Lyon?
Yes.
Mr. Kaver?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Right.
Alright, next item we have is our, another resolution for payroll dates. Um, these reflect our payroll dates for twenty-six pays. And is, I gotta be honest, by law, I guess we have to do this. It's just a great communication tool for people to, hey, when am I getting my check? So, or when, when do I get my direct deposit? So, um, you can see the dates there, again, it keeps with the twenty-six pay period. There's a couple in there that are, uh, months where there are three, um, but pretty much every two weeks.
Do we have a motion to approve the resolution of payroll dates for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Thank you.
One second.
A motion was made by Mr. Dominic, seconded by Mr. Fullerlove to approve the resolution of payroll dates for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Mr. Dominic?
Yes.
Mr. Fullerlove?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mr. Kaver?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBlack?
Yes.
Mrs. Lyon?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, the next item, um, the, the courtyard. I, I did some research into, um, the courtyard discussion. I've talked with a few folks about the courtyard at the junior, senior high school. Essentially, in a nutshell, what I would like to have happen is move from almost a classification of this is a science classroom to this is the public square, okay? Because think about things, you know, when you, when you, you know, see a, a, a science classroom, you think, oh, I'm gonna go and look at this plan, or I'm gonna go and look at this plan, or I'm gonna go and look at this environment. All those things are incredibly difficult to keep up. All of those things are incredibly difficult to manage. And we have so much acreage at the junior, senior high campus, we don't need to cram it into a courtyard, okay? Um, the trees are getting quite overgrown in there and need to be managed. So when I say treat it more like a public square, um, I had a conversation with Ken Hoffman, that, that manages our front areas of all of our schools and has made them look pretty incredible. Um, what can we do to make this like a three-season area? That it doesn't matter if it's been wet for a week, it doesn't matter if it's slightly cold, it doesn't matter if it's hot. So we have to be able to get out of the rain, we have to be able to get out of the sun for extended periods, and we have to be able to keep our feet somewhat clean. He's in pretty much agreement with me that trying to conduct a science classroom, for lack of a, I keep saying that, but that's the best way I know to describe it, in there is a losing proposition. What you need is an area where it's homecoming, kids wanna take pictures. Um, it is cross-country golf, football, track, baseball, softball. We have an area that would be just like the front of the high school. I mean, watch on Sunday how many families stop and take pictures in front of those purple and yellow flowers out there and plants out there. I mean, it looks like a million bucks and people love that. What could we do at the courtyard that it would actually be usable? So back to keeping the rain off and, and the sun off people. Ken said if you basically put a perimeter path with a patio in the middle and some type of a, like a sixteen-foot square structure that would keep the rain and or, uh, sun off of people, you'd be able to use it an awful lot more, okay? The paths would keep people's feet clean, um, and getting rid of some of the trees would open it up a little bit more. Because right now, when you walk by, even on a sunny day, it's kinda damp and dank in there because not a lot of sun gets in there. Um, it would be, again, just a, getting more towards a, not, I don't wanna use the term maintenance-free, but I'd like to see something in there a little bit similar to like what we have in front of the high school or in one of the, the memorial garden, um, down by, off the auditorium in the ag wing, where it's just a little bit more open and usable space, okay? I know everybody in here probably has a significantly larger amount of history with this endeavor than I do, so I'll stop talking for a minute and see what questions we have.
I'm guessing that the upkeep of it would be much more minimal because that, that's been, I'm gonna speak as all of us who's seen this project two, three, four, five times now, the always problem was the upkeep of it. And we've seen this, it looked like, every plan seemed like the old plan. And so I guess the way you're describing it, in some, it does sound different than what we've done in the past where it's a different type of space for a different type of use that. And I, I, I trust Ken Hoffman that, you know, he, he does a good job of making sure all our spaces look, that he would have some skin in the game makes me feel a little bit more comfortable with it. Thoughts on anyone else, does it sound different enough in what?
I'm assuming it's mainly more hardscape, right? Like more rock and then having this plant and that plant and that treble ship.
Right.
That's what I was wondering, what's, what's the ground gonna be like under the canopy or, you know, in the center?
Uh, whatever material we decide we'd like for the walkways to be, uh, to match that.
Cause you're talking like a, a, a walkway around the whole edge of it, or, you know, blocks or whatever, so.
Some benches, for example, and he got pretty excited when I was explaining the, um, the new equipment that, uh, we'd used the grant to purchase for Rasty's welding, John Rasty's welding class, the computer, you know, the computer ICNC, because he had some, I went out to his place and he's got some garden sculptures and stuff. And I'd be like, we've got a dozen kids that would sit down and punch it into the computer and be mass producing those things in about twenty minutes. All you do is clamp the steel in and start working on the computer and it's cutting it out. And he, really? And I pointed to a bench, I said, they could make those bench legs by the end of the day. All they need to do is get the measurements and put the steel in there and away they go. So he was pretty fired up and he came up with the idea also that you could have, um, and this would be an extension, almost like a moneymaker for the ag program, is you come up with a bench that's easy to make with all of that equipment that we purchased last year. You come in and have a sale. People are coming in and seeing this facility and they're like, okay, well, this bench is a hundred and fifty bucks and you can take orders, sit in it, the sculpture's, you know, eighty bucks. You know, you can take a look at it, see how tall it is, et cetera, take orders, so it's not just handing somebody a picture. Um, when he was talking about the shelter, he said, this is something that you could actually, you know, if, you could set chairs up because you've got a hard surface there. So if somebody wanted to be out there and it started spitting rain at this time of the year, it's not grab your stuff and run back in because it's open. Um, or if it's September and it's dry and the sun's baking, you, you can be underneath something to get out of the sun. He had a, I'd say this was a next level idea, maybe down the road, is he said, you could actually have your foods class come down and have an outdoor cooking station here. And I'm like, well, let's calm down, we don't wanna get Mr. Warneton and crew a, a big gas grill out there and just get Mendo's and I'll be out there feeding chows or something, so, but, yeah. But I think, my personal opinion, having, I, I had that, had a landscaping business for about eleven years and everybody laughed because anytime I would do an edger, they'd be like, well, why, you know, why do you use that? You know, I'd lay out garden hose to draw out the edges because I wanted something you could drive your mower next to without having to get off of it. And weed eating took about four minutes. So that's my mentality is keeping the maintenance down. I don't want it something where somebody has to be out there every week picking weeds or doing this. Clear it out, open it up, make it a space people can use. Um, we, financially, we could break it up over, if, if, you know, if the board is agreeable and we could look at some funding, um, we could probably break it up over three fiscal years. Uh, do something yet this year before June thirtieth, do something after July first for the next fiscal year, and then wait until next summer to finish something. Estimate wise, I'd say each fiscal year, we'd have to come up with some facilities money, um, in the neighborhood of thirty to forty thousand dollars for each fiscal year. So total, total project price right around a hundred to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Um, if you, again, breaking it up over three years and make it a little bit easier. But if we can actually have an outside meeting spot, if you will, you can use different silos of money for that. You can use some education money, you could use some O and M money. Uh, and then I don't know about the construction money, um, but we do have that question in the auditors right now. So it wouldn't just be, this whole pot of money would have to come out of building new grounds, for example.
Is that a paved surface that would be a wheelchair and walker accessible somewhere?
Yep. Likely it would be some type of a, like a modular hardscape, so when I say brick patio or a walkway, simply because everything comes through, in a wheelbarrow through those doors, which significantly adds to the cost.
Sounds, that's, when I heard that figure, I about choked because that was a lot more than what I thought this was gonna cost, obviously.
Me too.
That's why I looked at you, I was like, where?
Yeah, so, but that, that would, that would honestly be start to finish clearing out some of those trees. Everything, kind of, kind of starting fresh. I think, I think he mentioned leaving two trees. Cause if you look at a satellite photo of it right now, the only reason you know it's a courtyard is because there's a bunch of trees growing out of it.
The only, the only concern I have with it right now, Carl, is we don't kinda have that cost estimate. I, and since we still have time and have one more meeting or maybe we'll have to have a special meeting or something.
Yep.
Could you get us, could you have Ken give us the cost breakdown? Cause for sure.
That's exactly what I kinda wanted to see.
Kinda seeing something that big, I, I like the concept, I like it all, but when I don't have a dollar amount.
Right.
And a phased amount to know what we're getting into, I don't feel comfortable yet saying yes.
I'd mind having some sort of simple rendering too.
Yeah.
If we gotta pay for a little something for the rendering or whatever, I'm okay with that. I'm just, you know, we wanna know what it's gonna kinda look like when we're done.
He was ready to jump on it and I said.
That's a lot of money.
Don't, let me get, you know, let me get a feeling of which direction we can go before you spend a lot of hours. And he, he kinda had a little introductory video and stuff. And I just said, let's, you know, as Reece said, we've got a little bit of time, so.
I am kinda tired of this keeps coming back. And, uh, I just, so many times, I'm getting to the point where I wish it was like under the same roof everything else was and it was like a triangular classroom there or something, cause it's.
And that, and that's been interesting for me rolling in and being the outside set of eyes and saying, oh, gosh, we're this again, or we've talked about this and it never changes or this. And so I, I just, I'm, the rip the Band-Aid off and let's have a permanent solution to that, so.
But if we turned it into a real classroom, walls and roof, it would probably be at least one-twenty to do that.
Oh, yeah.
So, granted, you could use it year-round, but.
Use it year-round now, winter survival classes, I'm gonna write up a curriculum for that.
Yeah, so if that is. Just table it to next month? I would recommend that we table it.
Alright, I'm recommended that we table this until the next meeting, so everyone approve.
Aye.
Aye.
And I, I reached, I told Ken I'd reach out regardless of what's going on. And the reason I'm talking with Ken is as a graduate, he would be willing to, you know, cause I mean, if I were to roll up to a big landscaping company and say, hey, I'd like, you know, it's the old hamburger thing, I'll gladly pay you tomorrow for a hamburger I eat now. Um, if I said I wanna break this up over three. If I said, I want to break this up over three fiscal years, they'd be like, yeah, call us when you got your money saved. But, you know, Ken's just like excited, okay, well, we can do this and this and this and talking about phases, so. And he's.
He's good at making it, I think, usable as it's going through the phases. It's not, it's gonna be off limits, nobody gets to phase three.
You just gotta understand, we have a little scar tissue for the first time. Second time where Alan tried to slide it in, we're like, wait, wait, wait a minute. Yeah, so, yeah.
So, alright. We did look at the past where it was, I don't think it was accepted by the grant, excuse me, one of the S R grants.
Yeah, he tried to.
It was in, yeah, it didn't end up, evidently somebody at the state didn't like the idea.
I don't know if he even made it in there because I think Alan proposed it and we all shot it down.
So.
Sounds familiar.
So, but I will make sure, I'll talk to Ken tomorrow. I will get some renderings, he had some animation, I'm not sure. Try to get it in a format that can be shared just so everybody has a little bit of an idea. And then I'll talk cost and type of materials so that everybody can have an idea of what's coming for the next month. So then it'll be a better informed decision, right? Alright. Uh, next item, school handbooks, a big shout out to Ms. Cleveland for coming in this week and sitting down with me and looking through the school handbooks. I posted them there, I waited until after we had our subcommittee meeting to talk about those. There were no significant changes this year because there were so many last year probably. But Ms. Cleveland, do you have anything to add?
I couldn't find the changes, they were that insignificant.
If you couldn't find it, that says something.
Um, I will, so just in a few different instances like where, where it names you as the non discriminatory coordinator.
Yes.
It's still listed in Mr. Boucher's email.
Yes, that explains why I didn't get many calls.
For the bold policy and the grievance. I know that's at least in those two spots.
Yeah, okay. And the one month's email that is, isn't it?
For, in those sections?
The page six.
That was page nine.
Carl Jackson. Page forty, uh, grievance.
Page nine.
I just thought.
It has Alan's.
Ah, okay.
Oh. Okay, I was in the.
What page is grievance?
So you missed it.
Not sure. No, it's the same as last year. Matched.
We all missed it last year, basically. I can't find the grievance one.
He wants me to write it backwards.
Let's do a word search and see.
Yeah, okay.
There it is, I found it. No, that one's okay. It's in there twice. Page nine and page forty.
There's another one.
Forty, okay.
I know, I saw it.
Yeah, look at the email.
Oh, I'm on the.
She says.
I'm still struggling with Google Docs. The Google doesn't treat me right. Just like Ctrl F and you can find it. Page nine and page forty. Alright.
Um, so I have a question to on the expulsions as well. And this is maybe just a clarification for me. It says that the student is not given credit for the semester in which they are, the expulsion occurs. So that doesn't mean like when they will say commit the crime is, like if I went through the whole semester and was a normal student and then on the last week I messed up and got expelled, I get credit for that semester leading up to that, correct? Or that semester that I messed up in, does that make sense?
No.
It doesn't make sense?
So like, no, it makes sense, but no, you wouldn't get credit for it. Like, so if first semester you didn't get expelled, you get credit for that. Second semester, you don't mess up until like May third and you get expelled. From January to May, you don't get credit for that semester.
Really?
That's, and I'll be honest, that's the old cold turkey language cut. But there are, Senate Bill one hundred has been changing.
I'd say a surprise like that, you know, you could either.
Yeah, so.
So I don't agree with a lot of Senate Bill one hundred, but I really don't agree with, or I would, I don't agree with that, that if a kid.
Right.
Behaves, participates, gets good grades up to that point and then they mess up on day one hundred, that the hundred days prior in the classroom would just be a wash.
Let's see.
I feel like that's very narrow odds of a kid who's like getting passing grades and then doing something that's an expellable offense.
Right, but we had some issues like in the past ten days that I'd obviously don't know the history of those students for the earlier in the semester, but haven't heard the names before at least. So, you know what I'm saying?
I do agree with you more than I disagree, but the thing I struggle with is today, we're taking too many consequences away each day. Seems like we're getting more and more tolerant and taking away consequences from kids. And so I do struggle with that a little bit. There needs to be some.
Right, no, I, you know, I'm like.
I know, I know, I know, I said, I agree with you. I think I agree with you more than I, at least gotta be careful though.
Expulsion versus expulsion. So I mean, like what's happening is gonna expel, isn't it? And so don't they make it up on Plato?
So this was under expulsion.
Yeah.
And expulsion will be kicked out.
This, I guess the best way to explain it is this is almost like a built in protection for the district. If you have an expulsion, for example, a student of a very violent nature that had continuous egregious offenses, even Senate Bill one hundred does not want to bind us to having to bring that kid back for something.
That's a good.
So is that a good, Tim, you got, I mean, I guess.
Then you can expel with services too, that's.
Yeah, cause I think the one thing did bad right wrong is SB one hundred as we've approached scenarios we've had, it does give us some flexibilities of provisions of, I'd rather have it say this, but then I feel like the max is this, but we can always step it back, which we've done before in the past.
Right.
So I, why I think it says it will, I think we still have the right to put provisions as we see fit.
Maybe extreme.
Yeah.
And then, and then tailor it back.
Scare the jeezies out of them.
It, it, I don't, cause I don't think it did say will, is it awarded as a will or a shall?
It says no credit, no given credit for the semester in which the expulsion occurs.
So there's, there's enough legal room in there that there's no will or sh- will.
No, I don't know the word before not though, right now. I wasn't the acting president at the time, so I didn't know, I was gonna have to.
Just know you're gonna try a lot.
Right, Becky, would you like to weigh in on that? I'm so glad we have you. Alright. Moving on to Sherard Band-Aid.
Okay, let me, hopefully the, come on now.
Oh, I'm sorry, may I please have?
Becky? I do want her to get that again.
Can I have motion to approve the student handbook as presented?
Well, with the changes, as amended, my apologies.
I'm being a bad tea driver.
Your turkey sandwich is going to trash, sweetie.
I did not, okay.
Motion made by Mrs. Lyon, second by Mr. Hahn to approve the student handbooks as amended. Mrs. Lyon.
Yes.
Mr. Hahn.
Yes.
Mr. Fullerlove.
Yes.
Mrs. DeBlanc.
You want to keep it that way?
Yes.
Mr. Kimber.
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland. Mr. Dunnay.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Yeah. The boys baseball blocks. The girls lost, really? I know.
Baseball lost.
They, they told her they lost.
Yeah. Maybe, maybe they're sad.
I literally switched things around for Saturday, I was already on the road, I hope I didn't jinx it. Okay. Johnson, you did it!
Never call it.
I didn't tell anybody, it was just my excuse. Yeah, I know, I wished it, so. Okay, excited to unveil some opportunities here for a new face of Sherard, literally, the new face of a tiger. In talking, looking through Alan's notes, I remember talking to him about this in January before it started. So two years ago almost and just basically, what's that?
It's about time.
He'd, he'd talked about some of the same things that we've been talking about the last few months in terms of, we need something that's friendly for screen printers, we need something that's very easy to standardize, but we need something that's not a copyright violation. Occasionally you'll see folks walking around with LSU Tiger stuff on and I always think, please don't.
I could double wear my stuff.
Uh, so, gotta give a lot of credit to Kayla Elliott. She spearheaded this together with Lisa Emendorfer. I literally was able to kind of wind them up and they would check in with me periodically. And they worked through this, had a company that was phenomenal to work with, from what they've said, I didn't obviously have to. Gave them some input, had a pretty significant questionnaire in terms of what are we looking at? As I talked about before, for me, it was pretty much just making sure that it's something that's friendly to the printer and something that everybody's gonna want to use, okay? So that we have one tiger for Sherard and we see it everywhere. It falls into that mentality that I have. I want everybody in the area to be sick of hearing about Sherard, I want them to see that tiger everywhere. So, um, there's some, I guess, feedback here, you know, talks about what a mascot is. I know it hasn't been that long, almost everybody in here, I think probably, Casey, were you here when they did the last one? Okay, but almost everybody, Casey and Erin.
We did the football one, we did the football.
Yeah. That's my team.
Yeah. Uh, so this is, talks a little bit about, you know, what, what a mascot is. There is a saying among school administrators and the school community that the hardest thing on earth to kill is the school mascot. Now, I was two years at Winola, which were the Jets, and two years at Sherard. And because it was an annexation and not a consolidation, Winola pretty much and the Jets just went away. So there wasn't much of an opportunity there. But this is not getting rid of anything. This literally is just trying to find something that's uniform that everybody can agree on, okay? So we don't have to worry about changing away from a tiger, we're just gonna have a consistent tiger, okay?
So when you came to Sherard, were they, were they still the Tigers?
Mm-hmm, yep, yep. Winola just kind of literally ceased to exist, yeah, they jetted out.
Jetted, yeah.
What's that?
Is there an airplane in any of these Tigers?
I'm not subversive, Casey, no. That would be, that's a good idea, but I would. Lisa and Kayla probably would have flattened my tires if I would have suggested something like that, okay? Um, so essentially this PowerPoint is what I would like to say, we put out first in front of the kids to give them a, an opportunity to have a pick. And then after the kids have the opportunity, so probably like the first, have the kids do it, hopefully, starting next week and we just do a Google Forms to where the kids, they would get something through their school email and they'd be the only ones who could respond to this. Once we collect that data on what they would prefer, then put it out to the community to see what they would prefer. Um, this would be the introduction, if you will, so it's not just throwing out a couple of options here, pick one of these and tell me what you think. This kind of explains why we're doing it, okay? Um, let's see, scroll down. Option one, okay? As you can tell, the creative writers unleashed themselves and talked about the tiger mascot as a symbol of strength, et cetera. Uh, let's see, and let's see. So moving down, basically what we had to do is make sure that we have a front view and a profile view that's all the same thing, okay? So we have a front view here on the big screen, okay? Option one and the profile view, which is two, okay? Scroll down, here's some opportunities that we can have. Some light pole, the banners, if you will, those are really cool. I'd like to have some of those at each campus. Uh, and then option two.
Option two is scary.
I, yeah, I call option two the angry tiger, I like it.
Option two is pretty intimidating.
Yeah.
Free schoolers cry.
Yes.
Maybe. The teacher mad at me, mom.
Well, he's not mad at you, son, he's protecting you.
The other teams are gonna like offer two more, three more.
I like the one that looks like it's gonna eat you at any moment, yes.
The second, like two.
The second one.
Yeah, but it's kind of annoying, it's busy.
I agree, I think it's too busy and it's.
And it says, though noted, the printing partner, the abundance of fine lines could pose challenges for reproduction on buried merchandise.
Where's the happy tiger?
We put him on the preserve, he's eating steak the rest of his life. So, uh, I, I guess, just speaking from watching the process. I like. I like the profile number two far more than I like the head on version.
Okay, I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
And coaches, organizations would have their choice. So if they like, you know, if they say, okay, so for like me, if I had to pick one out of all, you know, both option one and option two, all four pictures here, I would pick option two, the profile. I think that, this one, I think that in my opinion, that looks the coolest. Looks like you need somebody at any moment.
But we're gonna pick one or two and then they can pick.
Is that a poma?
Front or side, right?
Yeah, so they go together. So you either pick option one or option two, it'd be the choices.
The second one, the bottom?
But then, I, I came to a major realization where we're gonna give it to the kids first and they can pick.
Yeah, yeah, it does, doesn't matter what I like. We lost control of this one.
I was getting ready to vote.
Well, and honestly, that was one of the things when I, when we first talked to the company that was doing it, I, I openly said, and I'm not saying this for my own credit, I go, I was through, you know, as a student, I was through when the Jets went away. I would not dump that on the lap of the school board, like I wouldn't walk in here and say, let's pick one, guys, you're up.
That's a losing battle for us.
Yes.
It is absolutely a losing battle for us.
So a, a nice presentation like this, people can look through and have some input, you know, that. And essentially both options are, are acceptable, if you will, I'm not, you know, without saying, okay, I want this one, but. Um, let's see, more opportunity.
I like the half tiger though.
Let's see.
Not gonna care about these Tigers anymore after, after like a few more days of cleaning up your mizzou Tigers.
Steve Miller has just been volunteered to help me with all the Google Forms to.
Yes, I'll do that.
So for, again, for the students, it'll be easy to lock them down in the Google to make sure that we have, uh, you know, to make sure that we only have student and email addresses giving us feedback. You know, no offense, I don't care what records and or even think, I don't want them voting on it. Um, so we can at least have a core group over the next two weeks to have some input. Um, we'll reach out to the teachers that they can help their kids at the younger levels figure some things out. But hopefully we have by the, two weeks from now, we've got some good data in terms of what the students prefer and then put it out to the community as a whole to see what they think.
Can you make sure Russia and China are influencing this election?
Make sure.
Okay, nice.
All foreign influence. So. And then it's got a nice little follow up, you know, to make people think, hopefully they'll look through it, you know, what do you, what do you think about the impression? I know immediately I thought I liked the second one because it looks like it's gonna eat somebody. Um, you feel the mascot represents our school spirit, you know, philosophical questions, if you will, so. Older kids will get this really quick, younger kids will obviously focus on the mascot.
Next time you're doing with your chatting with Carl, little kids section, you need to go talk to kids and ask them which logo they like and for the reason why. That should be your next one.
That'll be cute.
Which one do you feel you could outrun in the forums?
Yes.
Won't have to outrun either of, somebody slower or accidentally falls.
If we're alone in the woods, I'm tripping you. So, uh, thoughts, suggestions, anything that comes to mind? So, thoughts, suggestions, anything that comes to mind?
Those banners would look really nice on the new patio in the high school.
Actually, the reason we included those in there is because halfway through this process, I got a really cool email from some vendor that I'd signed up for at triple I. And they had taken our stuff and said, these are your possibilities, so I'm like, ooh, okay, well, how about this, so. I think everywhere has light poles that we can do that with. Alright. Uh, so if the board's agreeable with it, I will get with Steve tomorrow and we will push it out to all student. And staff, obviously, all together at once, so that we can get the, the school community first and then the wider community second. That would, I'm, I would aim towards, let's just say, June first for that. And if anybody has, take time, look through it, if anybody has any questions or anything, just let me know. Awesome, thank you so much.
Alright, communications and correspondence, we do not have anything attached there, but a reminder that graduation is Sunday. Board members be in, is it Mrs. G's room? Well, seven thirty, yep. Mr. Werniton, for me at least, tough love only on Sunday, okay, if you are nice to me, I will be a mess. I'm not speaking for Stuart John, but. Be is, yeah.
If I don't make eye contact, don't try to make eye contact.
Why is mom's body shaking on the stage?
Is that Kim throwing over, throwing up behind the stage? No, not like the band director last year.
I just can't look at Matt in the stands, I think that's what'll push me over the edge. Alright, seven point oh two, future agenda items, is there anything anyone would like added for our due meeting? To quote Reece, with that, I will take a motion to enter into executive session.
That didn't sound like Reece.
You didn't give the numbers right.
Why in accordance to? Oh, for Pete's sakes, let me find it. In accordance to. I can't read it, five. I've had it. IL five, no, five I L C, section one twenty dash C. Do I have to say it like colon C? Oh, my apologies, subsection C, subsection one. Take your chair back. All in favor?